Mr. Mayor. Call this meeting the Jefferson City Council of Order, roll call please.
Alderman, fire. Here. Niles?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Brandle? Lars? Tully?
Here.
Young?
Here.
Teeter? Here.
Council President Brandle is excused this evening. First, at this time we'll entertain public participation. Anyone who would like to address the council may do so. We ask that you please come to the podium, state your name and address, and reason for appearing. And seeing no one except our honored guest here tonight, we'll move on to, it's my pleasure and privilege to read a mere proclamation from the city of Jefferson, 2022 National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. And our honored guests tonight are dispatchers from the Jefferson Police Department, so we thank them all. Tonight we have with us LeAnn Hauser, Kelly Cuevas, Katie Chapman, and Terry Heintz. Thank you very much for all you do. We appreciate it. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of the information obtained from citizens with telephone and Jefferson Dispatch Center. Whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas enduring long hours, abnormal schedules, and handling frequent life and death emergencies, dispatch supervisor LeAnn Hauser, dispatchers Kelly Cuevas, Katie Chapman, and Terry Heintz set high standards in performing their duties in a dedicated, diligent, and compassionate manner. And whereas our public safety communications personnel serve the public daily in countless ways without due recognition by beneficiaries of their services. And now therefore be it resolved that I, Dale W. Offerman, Mayor of the city of Jefferson, declares the week of April 10th through 16th, 2022, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Jefferson in honor of LeAnn Hauser, Kelly Cuevas, Katie Chapman, and Terry Heintz, whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe, dated the sixth day of April 2022. Please join me in recognizing. We certainly appreciate everything you do. And while none of us wants to be on the subject of one of your telecommunications, we're always grateful that you're there.
Thank you.
May I make time for you? So thank you again. Next, we move on to Resolution Number 108, tonight's concept agenda. Alderman, fire, please.
Honorable Mayor, compliments of citizens, city of Jefferson, Resolution Number 108. Be it resolved by the common council of the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that the concept agenda for April 6th, 2022, if hereby adopted. Vouchers payable for April 2022 in amounts of $914,442.2172, and March 25th, 2022, in amounts of $171,569.04. VFW 2022 Flag insulation subsidy, council minutes from March 15th, 2022 of the common council. Licenses as approved by the regulatory committee. We have five operators license, Paul Larson for the Sonic Lodge, Riley Madden for the Jefferson Golf Course, Kayla Stefanski for Stable Rock Winery, Alyssa Tucker for Herbie's, Katie Bolt for Stable Rock Winery, and a cigarette license for Spirits Wild Saloon LLC. I would so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
I was second after.
Second by Alderman Teeter. Any discussion?
It was unanimous.
Thank you. I'd just like to offer one little note here. This is actually, this flag subsidy is for the American Legion, who holds the flags and provides the flags that are displayed along the streets. So if there's no other questions or comments, all in favor, please signify by saying ayes. Your name is called. Call if you're opposed.
Alderman Niles?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Teeter?
Aye.
Oh, yeah.
Aye.
It's approved six to zero. Thank you. Resolution Number 109, a resolution authorizing funding for a tourism Main Street position in coordination with the Jefferson Chamber of Commerce. Alderman Niles, please.
Honorable Mayor, citizens of Jefferson, council members, city of Jefferson, Resolution Number 109, authorizing funding for a tourism Main Street position in coordination with the Jefferson Chamber of Commerce. Whereas the Jefferson Chamber of Commerce Executive Director position is presently vacant, and the Chamber Board of Directors is reviewing options to fill the position. And whereas, as part of their review, the Board of Directors is proposing to reorganize the Chamber of Commerce, affecting those services which the Chamber provides and how these services are delivered. And whereas, the Board of Directors is proposing that an additional position be created to coordinate local tourism efforts and to facilitate efforts for Jefferson to become a Wisconsin Main Street community program. Whereas the role of the tourism Main Street Director position would be to manage the Main Street and tourism program, including partnering with vested stakeholders to advance downtown revitalization initiatives and fostering economic growth by managing tourism marketing efforts. And whereas, the Board of Directors is requesting financial assistance from the city of Jefferson to fund a portion of the cost of creating and staffing a tourism Main Street Director position per the following parameters: a three-year funding commitment in the total of $120,000. Said amount to be in three annual payments each in the amount of $40,000. The first payment of $40,000 to be made in '22, the second payment of $40,000 to be made in '23, the third and final payment of $40,000 to be paid in '24. And now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that it herein approves and authorizes a financial commitment in the total amount of $120,000 to assist with funding and staffing a tourism Main Street Director position, subject to the following conditions: the sum of $120,000 to be paid in three equal annual installments of $40,000. Payment number one is to be made by July 31st, 2022, payment number two is to be made by March 31st, 2023, and payment number three is to be made by March 31st, 2024. Payment number two and payment number three are subject to authorization by the Finance Committee upon their review and finding that the position has met or exceeded the metrics of accomplishment established for the position. Said annual payments are to be made to the Jefferson Chamber of Commerce until such time as the community has been accepted into the Wisconsin Main Street program. At such time, the payment is to be made to the Main Street program. The mayor or his or her designated representative will be a member of the team assembled to interview candidates for the tourism Main Street Director position and to recommend a preferred candidate for said position. The Chamber of Commerce will be responsible for managing tourism-related activities for the city of Jefferson and the Wisconsin Main Street program. Be it further resolved by the common council that the mayor or his or her authorized representative is authorized to sit on any oversight board or committee that may be established to oversee the tourism Main Street Director position. I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Alderman, fire. Tim, you want to give a brief description of this, a synopsis, please?
Surely, Mayor. The Chamber of Commerce Board has been in front of the council previously and made a presentation and a request to fund a new position that would really coordinate tourism and hospitality efforts for the community, as well as to lay the groundwork ultimately for the community to be accepted into the Wisconsin Main Street program. I think, Chip, you said it best when you talked about the position advancing downtown revitalization initiatives and promoting or fostering economic growth by managing tourism marketing efforts. This is a position that currently does not exist. It's always been assumed by the Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce, which currently is vacant. They intend to fill that position, but they think, to put simply, one position can't assume all the traditional roles or responsibilities. And so they propose to hire a second position, which they really only can do so with the financial assistance of the city council, and that's the matter before you tonight. As we had talked previously, if the council does adopt the resolution, you know, we would not budget annually for the city's commitment. We would set those funds aside now, which would be paid out over the next three-year period, so as not to encumber the annual city budget, which is significantly restricted by Wisconsin Leaving Limit Law. I think that's it.
Covers it very well. Does anyone have any questions of Tim? Or any feedback about the proposal? Okay. Hearing that, we move on to the vote. All in favor of Resolution Number 109? Please signify by saying ayes. Your name is called. Call if you're opposed.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Teeter?
Aye.
Fire?
Aye.
Niles?
Aye.
Tina Adams, thank you. Resolution Number 110, a resolution authorizing general obligation bonds, herein not to exceed $2,150,000 for street improvements. Alderman Miller, please.
Thank you, Mayor, fellow council members and citizens. City of Jefferson, Resolution Number 110. Be it resolved by the common council of the city of Jefferson, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, that there shall be issued pursuant to Chapter 67 of Wisconsin statutes, general obligation bonds, herein not to exceed $2,150,000 for the public purpose of paying the cost of street improvements. I so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Young. Any discussion? Tim, could you give us a...
I surely can. The fiscal year 2022, borrowing, and we are discussing the proceeds of which would facilitate the following projects. One, the downtown streetscape project, estimated at $1,250,000. The resurfacing of Collins Drive along the whole limits from Wisconsin Drive on the, I guess it'd be the west, all the way down to Collins Road on the east. That's a project that's scheduled for fiscal year 2023. We hope immediately following the reconstruction of the Main Street Bridge, which is scheduled to start later this year. Our best sense is that that will be a major detour route, and that will need significant restoration by the time we hit 2023 at the inclusion of that bridge project. So in a sense, you know, we're borrowing in advance to facilitate that project, only that will occur next year. And then lastly, we have a tax increment District Number Five project. That is the renovation, resurfacing of Riverside Alley, along with city-owned property that currently is surplus or overflow parking for downtown. That, of course, happens after the utility completes a pretty significant project, put all that overhead electrical underground, which is scheduled to be complete by, I think, June 30th. And then that project will be turned over to Bill, so he can facilitate the restoration of pavement in that alley and those parking alleys.
Thank you, Tim. Anyone have any questions to Tim?
So this is in addition to Sandborne and the other street projects that we're doing, correct?
Yeah, those are funded with just, on a pageable basis, by the city's capital improvement plan.
Thank you. Anyone else? Great. Well, good job working with elders, Tim. We appreciate your and Tanya's work to keep our debt manageable, but be able to invest in the community, which is a good idea to do so. There are no other questions or comments? All in favor of Resolution Number 110? Please signify by saying ayes. Your name is called. Call if you're opposed.
Alderman Tully?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Teeter?
Aye.
Fire?
Aye.
Niles?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Tina Adams, thank you. Resolution Number 111, a resolution directing publication of notice to electors relating to bond issues closely tied to the previous resolution. Alderman Young, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City of Jefferson, Resolution Number 111. Whereas initial resolution authorizing general obligations bonds has been adopted by the common council of the city of Jefferson, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, the city, and it is now necessary that said initial resolution be published to afford notice to the residents of the city of its adoption. Now therefore be it resolved that the city clerk shall, within 15 days, publish a notice to the electors in substantially the form attached heretofore in the official city newspaper as a Class 1 notice under Chapter 985 of Wisconsin statutes. I so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Tully. Tim?
Sure. Just really, really quickly. If a Wisconsin community is issuing general obligation debt for 10 years or less, we refer to those as general obligation notes. There is no requirement for publication in the news media. This debt is proposed to be scheduled over 13 years, so we're really issuing general obligation bonds. And when you do so with a bond, you have to publish the recorded notice in the paper, and that's what you're directing the city clerk to do tonight if this resolution is adopted.
Any questions or comments? Okay. Resolution Number 111. All in favor, please signify by saying ayes. Your name is called. Call if you're opposed.
Alderman Young?
Aye.
Teeter?
Aye.
Fire?
Aye.
Niles?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Tina Adams, thank you. Resolution Number 112, finally, a resolution establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed $2,150,000 general obligation street improvement bonds, Series 2022A. Alderman Tully, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Offerman. City of Jefferson, Resolution Number 112. Whereas on this day, the common council of the city of Jefferson, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, the city, has adopted an initial resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds in the amount not to exceed $2,150,000 for the public purpose of paying the cost of street improvements, the project. The above referenced initial resolution is referred to herein as the initial resolution. Due to its length and lieu of reading the complete text of this resolution, a complete copy is on file at the office of the city clerk and is available for public inspection. I would so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Miller. Any discussion? This is taking the final step to issue the bonds and approve city administrator or finance director to execute the bond sales of such bonds, with the parameters we've established.
Very good. And thank you, Alderman Tully, on behalf of the whole council for not reading 20 pages of resolution.
Absolutely. There are no other questions or comments? All in favor of Resolution Number 112? Please signify by saying ayes. Your name is called. Call if you're opposed.
Alderman Teeter?
Aye.
Fire?
Aye.
Niles?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Tina Adams, thank you. Resolution Number 113, a resolution authorizing award of contract for streetscaping improvements. Alderman Miller, please.
Thank you, Mayor, fellow council members and citizens. City of Jefferson, Resolution Number 113. Whereas the city of Jefferson received two bids from contractors interested in completing the 2022 Streetscaping Improvement Project in downtown Jefferson. Whereas the value of the lowest bidder is included in the following table. Parisi Construction, base bid was $582,153.75. Alternate bid A was $77,583.90. And supplemental bid items were $5,550. Whereas Town and Country Engineering and city staff reviewed the project bid results and recommends award of the base bid, alternate A, supplemental bid items, in the amounts of $665,287.65 from Parisi Construction LLC, while rejecting alternate bid items B, C, and D. And whereas the engineering estimate for this portion of the project was $630,786. Money for the project has been allocated in 2022 capital budget. Whereas the scope of work includes, but is not limited to, replacement of existing pavers and adding new brick pavers, removal and replacement of existing street trees with new grates and uplighting, spot curb repair, and other landscaping features within the downtown blocks of South Main Street, North Main Street, and East Resene Street. And now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that herein approves the Parisi Construction LLC bid with a 2022 Streetscaping Improvements in the amounts of $665,287.65. Furthermore, the common council of the city of Jefferson, herein approves the city administrator to authorize direct purchase items, including but not limited to tree grates, bike racks, lighting fixtures, and other items required for the project. Be it further resolved by the common council that the city administrator is herein authorized and directed to execute any contract or document associated with the above action on behalf of the city of Jefferson, upon the review and consent of the city attorney. The city intends to fund this improvement, the proceeds from the issuance of general obligation bonds or notes, and will reimburse any city funds advanced to the project from said proceeds. I so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Chip. And I'm going to turn it over to Bill, and he was going to have the presentation of what this is all going to be.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to take a few minutes to go through this project. It's a fairly complicated project. It involves a combination of scope to be completed by the city, the contractor that we're approving tonight, as well several items will be purchased by the city and installed by the contractor. The scope by the contractor includes stump grinding after the trees are removed by the city parks department, site preparation or demo of existing concrete, pavers, replacement of concrete sidewalk, new pavers and crosswalks, installation of tree grates, installation of additional landscaping, as well as electrical components for uplighting. Project budget as an overall, project $1,250,000, and that's between the city work, the contracted work, and the city purchased items, as well as engineering and contingency. The engineering estimate for the bid was approximately $631,000. During design and then pricing out materials, there were two items that caused some price increases. The first was going from a Unilock Holland paver, which is a non-sealed brick, to a Town Hall paver, which I've shared with the council. That is a heavier-duty sealed brick, so over time it will be less maintenance for the streets department because we will not have to seal these. So it's better suited for salt applications and use in the locations that we're looking at, at the locations. I will not there yet. So the increase of that value just about doubled the cost of the bricks. Secondly, there was an item that we had not anticipated, which was the installation of electric lines, control panels, and pull boxes downtown because the existing electric infrastructure could not accommodate the uplighting for the tree grates. This added approximately $70,000 to the project between the contractor costs, as well as having to hire a forester engineer for the design. This slide represents essentially the overall project. The green is the base bid and the alternate A, which is what we're recommending tonight, which includes the 200 blocks of South Main Street, the 100 block of North Main Street, and the 100 block of East Resene Street. The bids that we're rejecting, essentially because of the fact that those prices came in high, much higher than what we had anticipated. I think there were some issues with the scope. Were alternate bids B, C, and D, so that would have been East and West Milwaukee Street and West Dodd Street. The, I will also just let you know that it is our intention to, once a project is awarded, to continue to work with Parisi and potentially through some modified scope, or simply having some of the services provided by the city to be able to complete all portions of this project yet in '22. So as we stated, there was two bids received. Lowest qualified bidder was Parisi Construction. We are recommending the base bid and the alternate bids as shown in green here. As I go through this, I'm just going to explain some of the items that we're going to be doing. This slide is a representative of some of the bricks that are going to be replaced. These are existing pavers that are replaced. And you can see the, what it may look like on the crosswalks on Milwaukee Street and Dodd Street, where we will be replacing essentially painted crosswalks with paper block crosswalks. We'll also be doing the same thing to some of the island locations in Milwaukee and Dodd Street. As far as what we will be replacing them with, again, I had indicated the Town Hall style. This is an example of those tall, those type. And what we did is tried to mimic the existing street bricks down in Dodd Street, which is our original paved street. We really wanted to do that to kind of capture the look of Dodd Street, and also keep in mind that if the city ever wanted to replace that in the future, that we had an easy transition to be able to do that. So we'd be looking at Town Hall burgundy, red, basalt, and burnt clay colors for those. This next slide shows an area that we've had issues with in the past. This is the 100 block of South Main Street out in front of Associated Bank. This is an area where we're going to have raised curbs and slope sidewalk in between to accommodate some handicap areas as well. So this is certainly will be an improvement to what we have down there right now. The next slide, these are planters. So essentially, the street trees that are down there will all be cut down by the Parks Department. The trees will be removed, replaced with ginkgo trees, and we will be replacing them around those with metal grates. These will also have uplighting in the corners to light the trees. Those will simply just be white light trees. But these grates will allow for the expansion of the trees, better drainage, and we don't anticipate any issues with heaving like we currently have. This is an example of uplighting. The color's themed. This was something we had looked at early on, but we decided to go with just the white lighting because of the existing lighting that we have downtown. As I had said, there's also portions that the city will simply be directly purchasing. The existing garbage cans and planters that are downtown will be replaced with what I'm showing on this slide. We had looked at a lot of vendors, and what we really wanted to do was try to find local vendors that, to support local businesses in the area. The planters and garbage cans are actually custom receptacles and planters from Selgin and Lake Mills. The hanging baskets, these are essentially what we have, will be installed in brackets on the existing life poles downtown, and then be able to, in the fall, be able to put hanging baskets on those. So again, more beautification downtown. This is an example, a general rendering at this point. There'll be some modification to this, of bike racks that will be installed. Currently, we don't have any bike racks downtown. Rather than just putting standard bike racks, we're looking at some custom bike racks. These are essentially half-inch plate, 36-inch tall, with cutout renderings inside of them of different features that will be associated with Jefferson. And this is also done through a local vendor edge powder coating in Jefferson. So again, supporting local businesses, we're looking at doing this. There are several other items that we have allocated in the budget that we are still continuing to look at vendors for. Those included potential kiosks downtown, some wood structures for benches, and some decorative features as you come down Dodd Street. So we're still working on those, and I expect that we'll get continued prices as the project moves forward, not awarding any of that tonight. So as far as the project goes, after award tonight, I'll schedule... So as far as the project goes, after award tonight, I'll schedule a pre-construction meeting with Parisi. The city will also purchase these items, some of these items, as well as others that I talked about tonight. We will set a preliminary schedule. Right now, the construction will begin no earlier than May 23rd, and then we want to have this completed over roughly a 60-day period and certainly in place for coming of kite in the fall. Once the schedule is determined, there will be notifications on the city's Facebook page and webpage to notify businesses downtown so that they can plan for construction.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Anyone have any questions? I'm Bill, of the project. Looks like we got into a nice, adequate but tight construction schedule. I know I had some questions whether that would be completed in time for the municipal service, it was like that. Should be the...
That was the plan.
Should be the plan. Okay. If there are no other questions or comments? All in favor of Resolution Number 113? Please signify by saying aye as your name is called and all of your opposed.
Alderman Byer.
Aye.
Niles.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Teeter.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. And we're looking forward to a greater remodel downtown, beautified downtown Jefferson. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Section 19.85, Pardon 1C, Wisconsin State Statutes. I'm sorry. Oh, I apologize. My mistake, I appreciate that. Resolution Number 114, a resolution authorizing a developer's agreement with Gorman &amp; Company LLC for apartment building. Alderman Byer, please.
Honorable Mayor, council members and citizens. City of Jefferson, Resolution Number 114. Authorizing developer's agreement between the City of Jefferson and Gorman &amp; Company LLC. Whereas the City of Jefferson, City, and the Bond Realty LLC, Gorman &amp; Company LLC, developer, have entered into an offer to purchase agreement for the sale of approximately 2.5 acres of the city-owned property located in the Meadows Estates subdivision. And whereas Gorman &amp; Company LLC intends to construct an approximately 45-unit market rate apartment building on the property per the preliminary sketch and site plan attached to the approved offer to purchase contract. And whereas a condition of the offer to purchase contract is for the city and developer to enter into the developer's agreement setting forth the responsibilities and obligations of the parties in the development of this project. And now therefore be it resolved by the common counsel of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that it herein approves and authorizes a developer's agreement with Gorman &amp; Company LLC as a condition of the accepted offer to purchase agreement for the development of approximately 45-unit apartment building in the Meadows Estates subdivision. I would so move.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Young. Thank you. Tim, you want to give summary of this, please?
Surely. As Peggy mentioned, the city previously entered into an offer to purchase contract for a two-and-a-half-acre property in the Meadows Estates subdivision. It's on ground immediately to the south of the Jefferson Fair Park. The plan is for Gorman to construct a 45- to 50-unit facility that will have some combination of one, two, and three-bedroom apartments that is still being finalized. As Peggy mentioned, a condition of that offer to purchase agreement was for the parties to negotiate a developer's agreement. That was discussed and summarized earlier tonight at committee in the whole meeting. The major points are, in terms of the city's obligation, as a developer incentive, the city will return tax increment, potentially over a 10-year period, to help narrow a fairly substantial financial gap in the construction of this project, just simply due to increasing interest rates and rapidly increasing construction costs. The developer's primary responsibility is to construct this building, which represents about a $7 million investment. The plan is to start this fall, and as Peggy mentioned, this is a market-rate apartment building. The one major local approval the developer will have to secure from the plan commission and council is approval of a planned unit development application for a project that I think will likely be close to the rendering that's on the screen tonight.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions of Tim? What about the project? Pretty much needed reinforced market rate housing to Jefferson. Another offering of different types of housing available. There are no other questions or comments? All in favor of approval? Please signify by saying aye as your name is called and all of your opposed.
Alderman Niles.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Teeter.
Aye.
Byer.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you. Now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Pardon 19.85, Pardon 1C, of the Wisconsin State Statutes to consider employment, promotion, compensation, performance evaluation data of any public employee over that the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility to hire a full-time wastewater operator. Moved by Mrs. Teeter. Sir. Mrs. Byer. All in favor, signify by saying aye as your name is called.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Teeter.
Aye.
Byer.
Aye.
Niles.
Aye.
Thank you. We are going into closed session for a brief time, and we will reconvene, and we will take action again. Chief, have a good night. Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Tim. We are reconvened. At this time, we'll entertain Resolution Number 115, a resolution authorizing the hire of a full-time wastewater operator. Alderman Teeter, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, council members and citizens of Jefferson. Resolution Number 115, whereas the position of water wastewater operator will be vacant in June of 2022, and it has been determined to be in the best interest of the water wastewater utility, the position be filled when a qualified applicant has been identified. And whereas the personnel committee has reviewed his candidacy and candidacy as recommending that Robert Lehman meets the requirements of this position. The recommendation of the personnel committee is to hire Robert Lehman to fill the vacant position of the water wastewater operator, and now therefore be it resolved by the common counsel of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that herein approves and authorizes the hire of Robert Lehman to fill the vacant position of wastewater plant operator, subject to the following parameters. He shall successfully pass a reemployment physical drug and alcohol screening. His starting salary shall be $26.50 per hour, and he placed as at classification six on the City of Jefferson Compensation Plan, annually placed on the PTO benefit schedule at the seven years of service step. I so move.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Alderman Miller. And Rod, if you could, please just give us a synopsis of his qualifications.
Yeah, Todd recommended Robert based on he currently works for a company that televises and cleans out sewers and thought he'd be a good fit. He's a local guy, and right now he travels the state and just wants to be in one place. And this was unanimous at personnel earlier.
Good. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions, Rod? All right. Good work. Hearing none. All in favor of the approval of the hire? Please signify by saying aye as your name is called and all of your opposed.
Alderman Young.
Aye.
Teeter.
Aye.
Byer.
Aye.
Niles.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Wonderful. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
This is Niles, seconded by Alderman Byer. Out of voice vote, all in favor of adjourned? Please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, Mayor, adjourned. Have a good night.